Meeting of September 13, 2022 is called to order. The first item on the agenda is the approval of agenda and order of priority. Are there any items board members would like to add or delete from the agenda? Dr. Pritchett.
Thank you. I would like to add a motion. I don't know whether you want me to read it or not.
Please.
It is a motion to support the passage of Senate Bill 861 sponsored by Senator Ed McBroom and the passage of Senate Bill 942 sponsored by Senator Sean McCann. These bills introduced on February 8 and February 2 respectfully would provide streamlined reciprocity for out-of-state teachers and counselors by amending sections of MCL 380.1526 and MCL 380.1531 and MCL 380.1233. Additionally, support the development of a bill in the state legislature in collaboration with the Michigan Department of Education to provide flexibility and student safety associated with the professional requirements of substitute teachers.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion here? Mr. McMillan.
Yeah, I did print out. I know we're not to debate.
The merits.
The merits of it, but I do have concerns, so I but I'm certainly willing to put it on the agenda to discuss it. It's just some things I don't quite understand.
Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Marilyn, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. Is there any other are there any other additions or amendments to the agenda that would like to that a member would like to move forward?
Yes, thank you. I would like to move to amend the agenda to include apparent concerns resolution, and I'll read it into the record at this time. Whereas the Michigan Constitution.
Support, by the way. I'll support it.
If we if we could if we could ask for.
Yes.
Share its acknowledgement, please.
Will you acknowledge that I'm asking to amend the agenda? Thank you. Whereas the Michigan Constitution and Michigan compiled law strongly determines and supports parents as a child's first and primary educator, and it is recognized that individual parents have the right in the state of Michigan to make the educational decisions that are best for each individual child. Whereas the pandemic has created significant challenges for parents in this natural and constitutionally designed role, leading to a need for increased access to effective and timely resolution of conflict. Whereas the State Board of Education is the constitutionally elected board designed to provide oversight over K through 12 public education, including making appropriate recommendations, writing and abiding by bylaws, and earnestly implementing policy infrastructure that supports parents. Whereas the most effective way to restore the role of and to elevate the parental voice is to provide a policy pathway in place locally as the first means of resolving disputes with a pathway to appropriate escalation. Therefore, be it resolved that the State Board of Education recommends that every local school district create a parent connection committee with a formal process that encourages the engagement of parents to address educational needs and resolve conflict locally. Be it further resolved that the State Board of Education will amend its bylaws to implement a process that will allow parents and other taxpayers who are not satisfied with the resolutions or lack thereof of their concerns by their local school boards to get assistance from the State Board of Education.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table from Ms. Snyder. We have a second from Mr. McMillan. Any discussion?
Well, I.
Please.
You know, again, we don't need to talk about the merits per se, but you know, I do think that we've heard plenty of parents. We've had call in days where we've had over 100 or 150 of them. So I do think that there is, you know, a need out there, and I think this resolution is worthy of discussion and and voting later on in the meeting.
Very good. Thank you. President Albridge, Vice President Pugh.
The resolution calls on the State Board of Education to amend our bylaws, and Section 6 of the bylaws addresses the amendments process. If any member of this board is interested in amending our bylaws, they need to follow that section and propose amendments to the board in writing, which will then be tabled until the next meeting. And further, an amendment to the bylaws requires six affirmative votes to pass. A resolution mandating that the board will, quote, amend its bylaws is not the appropriate means by which an amendment is proposed or approved. A resolution only requires a simple majority of the board to pass, while actual bylaw amendments require a supermajority. Therefore, procedurally, this resolution appears to be an attempted end run around Section 6 of the state's board bylaws and should not, in my opinion, be on the agenda, and I encourage a no vote.
Thank you, President Albridge. Vice President Pugh.
It's not that we don't all at this table believe that the voice of parent is beyond vital in the education of children, but I will be voting no because in talking to parents, they feel that this is also overstepping the mechanisms that are already in place, such as PTSD and other opportunities for for parents to have voice.
Okay, thank you very much. Other, I want to make sure everyone gets a first bite before. Okay, Mr. McMillan, back to you.
Yeah, procedurally, it would make no sense to say that we can't take up a resolution because there's an end run. We can change the resolution instead of will to intends to amend its bylaws. You know, if if so, there's no no end run. This is not authoritative. A resolution just describes intent or position. So certainly, I'm sure the maker and me as a seconder would support an amendment saying intends to as opposed to will. So I hope that if that was the reason that it was given, that we can certainly there will be support for the parents out there and wanting to help with conflict. So thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Ms. McMillan. Ms. Snyder, back to you.
As the maker of the of the motion, I would say yes, that that's precisely what we we could do with that last paragraph. This resolution being presented to the board is solely for the purpose of being willing to have the discussion of what it takes to essentially transform the infrastructure for parents to be able to effectively make their concerns known and conflict resolution. So if if we can talk about that, if we could put a resolution on the floor as something we would be willing to discuss, that's that's really all that's going on right now.
Okay, thank you very much. President Albridge, did you have anything else to to share? I thought saw your hand up and then it went back down.
No, 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 no.
Very good. Other members of the board? Hearing and seeing, no other comments. This is a vote not on the merits of the proposed resolution, but rather on whether this resolution should be added to the agenda. Marilyn, if you could do a roll call vote, please.
Lipton?
No.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
No.
Pugh?
No.
Snyder?
Yes.
Tilly?
No.
Albridge?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, having received no other proposed resolutions prior to today, this vote will be on the base agenda as put forward. Marilyn, if you could do a roll call vote, please.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Snyder?
No.
Tilly?
Yes.
So including quick limit instruction, school-wide academic performance, and data-driven instruction. They were also improving their focus on non-academic initiatives, like working with student behavior, family and community engagement, and student attendance interventions. Almost three-quarters of principals told us that they were increasing their focus on professional development of their teachers and staff. About 41% said they were focusing increasingly on teacher hiring. So kind of going off this human capital issue, we didn't expect, maybe we should have, but we didn't go into the study thinking human capital would be the major part of the study every year. And if you've read the nearly 200-page reports we put out every year, you'll know the largest chapter is always on human capital. So in 2018-19, 20 of 21 partnership leaders that we talked to told us that human capital was among the or the most significant challenge for turning around their districts. And this was for many reasons, and it really affected their ability to develop their teaching force. So one thing we heard a lot about was, we're putting into place professional development, we're really focusing on PD, but then we're seeing all this churn of our teachers. And so the PD is kind of lost on them. And some other districts is getting the benefit of the PD. We also heard a lot about, you know, these are veteran teachers sometimes, and when they leave, when they churn, we lose all their kind of school and district-specific knowledge that they were bringing to the partnership districts that was really helping us. And so that was considered a big loss. In addition, we heard about system-wide improvements that were stymied over time by the human capital concerns. So one thing that really stuck out to me was a district that told us they had spent money buying a really great new ELA curriculum. But unfortunately, with so many subs coming in out of the classrooms, they had to kind of bench that curriculum and instead go back to a rote curriculum where they said they could tell the sub, you know, Chapter 7, Page 4 on a given day, and that sub could pick up where the next person had left off. So here's a quote from one of our partnership district leaders. This person said, "That kind of turnover every time that happens, that puts us in a situation where we're trying to rebuild things that had previously been functioning and working, and now we're just trying to rebuild it." Educators reported working hard to fix this problem, which they really attributed to lower compensation in partnership districts, to a lack of locally available teachers, teachers who wanted to work in their districts, and the mere fact that they were a partnership school or district, which kind of gave a signal that they were not a successful school or district. So I'm listing here some of the many interventions that partnership districts told us they were putting into place prior to the pandemic to address human capital challenges, including using long-term subs instead of daily subs, like I talked about altering instructional programming, focusing on teacher comp and development. One thing that we heard a lot about is a focus on attracting strong school leaders. This is because we've shown every year of our report, actually, that teachers are willing to stay if they've got a strong school leader, and that strong school leaders help build culture and climate, which again reinforces teachers' willingness to stay in the school. There was also some talk about grow-your-own programs and also attracting what they called right-fit teachers, teachers who understood the culture and context that we're working in and were willing to be there and happy to be there. Okay, so what happened to student achievement prior to the pandemic? So green is year one, this is cohort one only. So again, these are the districts that were identified first and started implementing in 17, 18, and 18, 19 is year two for them. The green is year one, the blue is year two. And you'll see these sort of positive bars in green on the math and ELA gains, and these are significant. And these show there was a significant increase in student achievement in both math and ELA, third through eighth grade, relative to similar schools. So we use a difference-in-difference model here, which is a way to causally identify the impact of the partnership program on partnership schools and districts compared to a similar set of schools and districts that were not part of the program. And what you see here is that compared to similar schools and districts, partnership districts were doing quite well in year one, maybe a little less well in year two in third through eighth grade, but not substantially, much less. Math SAT, they were kind of rolling about even, and they were also improving in ELA SAT scores. What you cut off at the bottom there is that, and I don't show it here, the lowest achieving students in Cohort One were actually improving at faster rates. So we're seeing decreasing achievement gaps in these districts, which is really important. It wasn't that we were just targeting the kids on the bubble, right? The proficient, almost proficient kids. They're really working on these lowest-performing students to help them increase their achievement. This is Cohort Two. Again, we only have one year of test scores for them prior to the pandemic. This is 2018-19. You'll see they had some positive achievement gains suggested in math and ELA in third through eighth grade, not at the size or significance of Cohort One. And we actually saw some negative losses there for math and ELA. It was significant in ELA that their scores were getting worse compared to similar schools. But again, the lowest achieving students were doing substantially better than the higher achieving students in these districts, so we were closing achievement gaps still. This is a complicated graphic, but I wanted to put it into context of other turnaround interventions that are happening across the country that have been studied rigorously. We look at effect sizes, because what does .1 student deviations really mean? No one really knows. So you'll see here is the green on the right. You see what we consider a small or a medium or a large effect size in education research. And on the left, you see sort of small, medium, and large negative effect sizes. The important thing to notice is that partnership schools Cohort One, which we've highlighted in green, and Cohort Two is in blue. Cohort One in particular is scoring at about a medium effect size and larger than most other interventions of similar kinds, in particular larger than Michigan STIG schools and also larger than school closures in Michigan, which have actually been rigorously studied in the state and were shown to be pretty negative for student achievement. Okay. How did the pandemic affect partnership schools and districts? So let me just say that every time we publish something about how COVID affected partnership communities and schools and districts, someone in my office starts crying. It's pretty terrible, some of the things we've been hearing from schools and districts about the things that have happened to their kids and their communities. And I think that this one figure kind of talks about that. So this is the death rate per 100,000 in partnership communities relative to non-partnership communities. We have this at the county level, so we kind of look at the counties that have a partnership district in them. And you can say at that beginning of the pandemic, early in 2020, the death rate was so much higher in these communities than it was in the non-partnership communities. And while it evened out a little bit over time, at the peaks, it was almost always higher. And so on the right, we show kind of cumulative cases per 100,000 on the top and then deaths per 100,000 on the bottom by March 1, 2022. And what you can see is there was 6% higher case rates overall by March 1, 2022, but 17% higher death rates. And this really filtered down into the school system and affected the kids. So these are teacher reports, and they're teacher estimates of what happened to students during the pandemic. And these are just three of the many items that we asked about. We asked in ranges, because we don't think a teacher's going to be able to tell us exactly 3% of kids or something. So we asked them in ranges, which is why we have bars here. The green is 2021, and the blue is 2122. And what you can see is that by 2122, teachers thought that a third to 60%-ish of their students had contracted COVID. They felt about 25% to 43% of their students had suffered from continued or longer-term symptoms of COVID. And importantly, in both years, between about 44% and 63% of students had been affected by the socio-emotional trauma that resulted from COVID. This is one quote that a teacher wrote in to our open-ended response this year. It's notable that 35% of teacher-free text responses in our survey this past year were having to do with the impact of COVID on their instruction and on their schools. That's unheard of in terms of survey methodology. And I just think it's important to think about what this quote says. "In fall 2020, I had to have students practice what to say when someone said a family member had died. I'm sorry for your loss. This is not part of any teacher's curriculum. Our class lost three students between 2020 and 2022. This is a component that continues to live with all of us, the loss of loved ones. We lost staff members. It is a formidable act to continue to teach curriculum in the face of death. One student went to 11 funerals in 2021. We comfort, we support families that the son died in his bed after lying down on a Friday evening. We cried with peers and students. And we continue to say, Monday is today and the date is. We smile and we sob inside. We smile as the school bus arrives with half of our students and continue on our day." So this is the instructional modality that was happening during 2021. With partnership with MDE and SEPI, we were able to collect data from every single district in the state and almost every month of the pandemic about what they planned, how they planned to instruct students. I think you guys have all seen some presentations we've done on that before. The green lines are partnership districts throughout that year, and the blue lines are non-partnership. We look at districts that were in-person each month, that offered in-person, that offered hybrid, or that were remote only. And what you can see is that partnership districts, because they were in these communities that were so much harder hit by the pandemic, were more likely to be remote for every part of the school year and were less likely to be in-person. And you can see kind of around February, March, when things started to clear up a little bit, these districts largely switched to hybrid. Disruptions in student in-person learning also continued in 2122. So two-thirds of principals reported they had at least one classroom shut down during the 2021-22 school year. And one-third of principals said that their school closed for in-person instruction completely during the 2122 school year, or at least some part of time. Absenteeism was a big problem in districts during the 2122 school year and in the 2021 school year. So here are principals' estimates of the proportion of students who were absent over the last month during the winter when we asked them. Teachers' estimates are pretty similar. And we see in 2021, principals told us that between 25% and 43% of their students were chronically absent. And in 2122, between 19% and 37% were. Partnership schools were a little harder hit on this front than were non-partnership schools within partnership districts. But educators were working hard to address attendance. So this is a question we asked in the 2122 survey. And we said, you know, are you focused, what kinds of interventions are you focusing on? And this was one of the lists. This is one of the highest-rated interventions they were focusing on. So principals told us it was a major focus of their work this year and a little bit higher in partnership than non-partnership schools. So all of this, you know, upheaval and chaos that was happening in their lives really did affect the students' ability to behave and to, you know, perform in school. So we asked teachers, to the extent to which they agreed that students in this school are struggling with either academic content on your left or student behavior on your right. The green bars, the green parts of the pie charts tell you what they said agree or strongly agree that these things were struggles for their students. And you can see that about 80% of teachers agreed or strongly agreed that academic content was a struggle for their students given pandemic-related interruptions to learning. And about 70% said the same about student behavior. So with that dismal look, let's look at how partnership schools are faring now. So during the pandemic, we didn't really have test scores, as you all know. So we didn't have M-steps during 2020. And we only had a 70%-ish percent response rate overall in the whole state in '21. And so we asked teachers and principals what proportion of their students they thought began on track that year with content standards, and what proportion they thought would be proficient by the end of the school year. Teachers are on the left here, principals are on the right. Blue is the proficient by the end of the school year. Green is on track at the beginning of the school year. And what you can see here is in 2021, teachers believed that about 19% of their students began on track, but they believed that only about 13% would be proficient by the end of the school year. Principals were maybe a little more optimistic, but not a lot. Teachers in the beginning of 2021 believed that only about 12% of their students were starting on track with content standards, and they thought about 12% would end the year on track. Principals were not more optimistic about the beginning. They thought that about 19% of their students began on track, sorry, they were more optimistic, began on track with the content standards, but they believed, only 9% believed that they would end the school year that way. So we do have benchmark scores from 2021. The way that the legislation was written, we were not able to use individual student scores or even school-level scores. So we aggregated these to the district level. So we are here comparing partnership districts to non-partnership districts in the state. We look at both I-ready and the NWA map, because all partnership districts used one of those two tests. The brighter blue, kind of tealer color, shows a regression where we don't control for any district characteristics. If you want to see on average how our partnership districts doing relative to all the other districts in the state. And the darker blue lines show when we were controlling for other student, other district characteristics who were comparing partnership districts to similar districts. What you can see is that partnership districts are doing much less well than other students in the state on average. But when you compare them to similar districts, they're actually maybe doing a little better even than similar districts in districts that are doing the I-ready, and about the same or a little better on the NWA district. We looked at graduation rates before and during the pandemic as well. Before the blue line on the left, you see the two years prior to the pandemic. On the right, you see the two years of the pandemic. Green is Cohort One, blue is Cohort Two. And you can see especially in Cohort One, we were making progress on partnership on graduation rates. So anything above the zero line is this event study model, again, that we're comparing to similar students in similar schools. And you can see that in 2718, it was about the same for Cohort One in terms of graduation rates. But by 2018-19, graduation rates were actually better in partnership districts slightly than in similar districts. However, in the pandemic, 2019-20, that dropped substantially for Cohort One and then kind of increased just a little bit above where similar schools and districts were in 2021. Cohort Two started the pandemic with lower graduation rates compared to similar districts that went substantially down in the first year of the pandemic and rebounded a little bit back to where they had been prior to the pandemic. So we asked principals and teachers, you know, what did you focus on to improve student academic performance? And we asked them this in 2021 and 2122. And you can see that they told us they were focusing on a lot of these sort of academic areas. Principals were similar to teachers. I'm just showing you teachers here. Green is 21, blue is 22. And you can see 69% of teachers said they were focusing on assessments in 2122. Two-thirds of teachers said they were focusing on school-wide academic performance, and over two-thirds said they were focusing on curriculum instruction in both years. On the right, because literacy is a focus, obviously, in the state, we looked at what proportion of teachers and principals reported a major or primary school focus on literacy. You can see almost three-quarters of teachers said they were doing that and 83% of principals in 2122. Principals in 2122, we asked them specifically, you know, what are you using to address student needs and accelerate student learning in the wake of the pandemic? And that's, so these are the areas that we asked about. Some of them in the blue on the left in the graph there. And you can see that principals said they were focusing, to a great extent, or making it their top priority, to use data-driven instruction, a focus on essential skills, culturally responsive teaching, and trauma-informed instruction. They were also using social-emotional learning strategies. Relatively fewer, but still about a third, a little over a third of principals, said they were using extra time on core subjects and extended learning time. And about 30% said that they were focusing, to a great extent, or making 101 tutoring their top priority. It's not that these schools weren't using tutoring, which we know is one of the proven interventions that can help to accelerate student learning. It's that that just wasn't maybe their priority. So we see that 35% of principals said they provided peer-to-peer tutoring, and two-thirds said they provided tutoring by adults. We also focused a lot on socio-emotional, mental health, and behavioral needs of kids. So you can see in 2122, about almost 100%, 98.3% of principals told us that they were focusing on providing their students with a social worker. That was up from about 83% the year prior. Over three-quarters in 2122 said they were providing their students with a socio-emotional counselor, and mental health services, restorative justice programs, and over two-thirds with health services. Okay, so we're going to talk about teacher turnover, and then we're almost done. I'm happy to take any questions you may have. Cohort One again in green, Cohort Two in blue. These are, again, these difference-in-difference event study analyses that we compare partnership to similar schools. And what we can show here is prior to the pandemic, teacher turnover, this is teacher turnover, so teachers leaving partnership districts to go to other districts, was actually somewhat lower in partnership schools compared to similar schools in Michigan. And then after the pandemic, you see it actually went down. So that turnover was even less than similar schools during the pandemic. For Cohort Two, it was about even with similar schools. And then in the second year of the pandemic in 2021, it did go down. This is a good story in that teachers weren't leaving partnership schools at higher rates than similar schools and districts. But here's where the story gets complicated. We also look at the proportion of teachers that exit Michigan workforce. These are, we don't see them in other districts. They could be going to private schools, we don't know that. But we don't see them in any charter or traditional public school district in Michigan. You can see that exit has always been somewhat higher, even before the pandemic, from partnership districts. But in both, but especially in Cohort One, this increased substantially during the pandemic. So the district, the teachers that were leaving the state or teaching in Michigan were leaving partnership districts at much higher rates than other similar districts. So we asked teachers, you know, what are your plans for next year and why? Why would you stay or why are you going to leave? And it was very clear, the pattern was incredibly clear here, to tell us that the key factors in decisions to stay in their schools were school leadership, culture and climate, and their students. They wanted to be with those students. The key factors in their decision to leave the district of profession was workload. They felt so overworked, they were so burnt out. Pay, they felt they were not getting paid enough for the work they were doing. They were worried about their accountability designation and how that would affect them and their ability to improve in the future. And they felt that their treatment by their administrators during the pandemic was not what they deserved. So with all of that, we did ask them, you know, do you believe in this model? Do you agree or do you strongly agree, there's a five-point Likert scale, in the kind of core tenets of this model? And you can see resoundingly, green is teachers, blue is principals. And by the way, in almost all surveys across the country, principals are always more optimistic than teachers. You see 88% of principals believe or, you know, strongly agree or agree that the improvement goals that they've set will help meet the needs of their students, that instructional efforts are aligned with their improvement goals, that the improvement goals are focused on the most important issues facing their school, that they focus on clear and concrete steps they can take to improve student outcomes, and that their improvement goals are feasible to accomplish in a three-year timeframe. I will note that this year, even those 81% of principals was substantially lower than previous years. So they felt that the likelihood of being able to accomplish their goals in three years was less than it had been prior to the pandemic. And one thing that just has stuck out to us a lot, because this is different from other turnaround models across the country, is that educators are really beginning to view partnership as a supportive capacity-building intervention. So here are two quotes I'll let you read for yourself, one from a charter partnership leader and one from a TPS partnership leader. So some quick implications and recommendations, and this is mostly from our fourth-year report, but I think they, I picked the ones that I thought carried through. The partnership model is actually a promising turnaround reform, and prior to the pandemic, was helping improve systems and outcomes in partnership schools and districts. But the pandemic, as we know, had a tremendously outsized impact on the communities in which partnership schools and districts exist. And this did stall their progress, though, again, partnership districts did fare somewhat better than demographically similar districts during the same period in terms of benchmark assessment outcomes. So our recommendations are to continue supporting partnership districts and schools and continue providing them with resources and support to help them improve their schools and districts and their systems and their student and teacher outcomes. Interestingly, we also are concerned about exiting partnership districts. So there's going to be a round four coming up soon. Some districts will be re-identified, some will be newly identified, and some will exit partnership. These ones that are exiting are doing so because they have done a good job. We don't want to leave them high and dry where they don't have any supports. And so I know MDE is working on that and thinking about that. We think that, you know, there's some room to be able to provide partnership educators and leaders with some training on the use of evidence-based interventions to accelerate learning in the aftermath of the pandemic. The efforts to reduce student absenteeism are incredibly important, and we should be supporting partnership schools and districts in these efforts. And last, you know, there's been a huge focus on building the educator pipeline and workforce in the most recent budget and MDE's work. This is incredibly important, and we need to be focusing particularly on these schools and districts, which are losing teachers at higher rates to leave the state. I'll end there, and I'm open to any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Professor Strunk, for your presentation, for your work, for the partnership between EPIC and MDE. It's a very valuable and important partnership. Well, members, questions or comments? Ms. Lipton.
Thank you for that presentation. I think it's particularly important that you highlighted that this is an intervention in a wider sort of scope of interventions. And I think that it's no surprise that this state has partaken of a variety of different interventions, ranging from one extreme, which includes DAA-type model, which is sort of what they use in Tennessee and what they used in New Orleans, versus, although I can't pay credit for it, a prior board had the wisdom to look at a model that is truly shown to be successful, which is using data to identify those districts that are struggling and in need of help. And instead of punishing them, to actually wrapping the, you know, arms, if you will, around them and actually helping them improve. And certainly, the pandemic, you know, was an unexpected trauma that all schools faced, and certainly struggling schools are going to face that as well. But I think that if you look at the alternatives, this is, in my mind, clearly an alternative that is shown to be far more effective than some of the other punitive reforms that we see, particularly in other states that have doubled down on that and reached the results of that doubling down, if you will. So that's sort of my general, I don't, it's no surprise, I'm a big fan of this type of model. What I'm wondering about is a couple of things. Do you think that three years is enough time? Because I'm wondering if maybe a longer, longer off-ramp might be appropriate. And if the off-ramp were elongated, I'm assuming that the impediment would be funding? Okay.
Yeah, so those are great questions.
What are your thoughts on a longer off-ramp?
So I will say that the school reform literature is pretty clear that it takes longer than three years to turn around a very struggling school or district. So that's one thing. So I do think that thinking about how we could embrace these schools and districts for longer and support them for longer would be a useful idea. Funding is an issue, so the legislature has allocated, I believe, $6 to $7 million a year in 21h funds to go across, you know, 30, 50 districts.
Six.
Six to seven million total.
Six.
Six. Six million has been allocated in 21h funds, I believe, this year. Is that right, Bill? So that's not very much for this many schools and districts to ask them to, you know, put into place very strong interventions. So I would suggest that we would need to think about funding if we wanted to elongate the time. We need to think about funding anyway, because it's not enough for these schools and districts, especially in the wake of the pandemic. Another issue is capacity. So when I did a lot of this work when I was in LA Unified School District working with them, I asked the superintendent there once, how many districts, how many schools think you could turn around well at a time? And she said, "Five." We've got hundreds in this model. And so if we're going to ramp up the time we're spending, we also need to think about the capacity at OPD to help these districts and in the ISDs to help these districts and actually provide them that kind of support.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lipton. Dr. Pugh.
I just want to thank you for this report that you've provided us. Though, of course, we want to make sure that we're doing all that we can to make sure that we make up for the disruption that our children have experienced. But I really do appreciate the well-roundedness of the report that you have provided. One of the numbers that I continue to repeat and unfortunately continues to go up is that we have children who have been orphaned, who will never return to normal. And our educators, particularly in the schools, types of schools that we're talking about, because the numbers bear out that that's, you know, those children were hardest hit. And oftentimes, when we're talking about COVID and we're talking about the disruption to our education system, those pieces are left out. And so to have those real-life voices of what teachers are experiencing, you know, I think it moves probably all of us or should have. And so I thank you for delivering this data with those pieces of data that are often missing but are so critical to this discussion, because we cannot keep moving and forget about those children who have definitely been impacted in a way that it will affect them forever. And you had the data about their, our children and how they were physically affected. But the fact that they have parents who are no longer, or caregivers who are no longer here with us, and that's very real. So I do appreciate that. Just one question that I have, there were some self-responses from the educators, and some of them were related to performance of the children, academic performance. Was that also based on quantitative data? Was any of that, I might have missed that.
Yeah, so the educators' perceptions of student performance during the pandemic, and again, we didn't have the test scores to help us, even the quantitative we look at it, were based on the survey data that we collected.
Okay, so it was just their self-response? And then they were not basing that on anything that they were looking quantit, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Dr. Elbridge.
So just piggybacking on what Pam just mentioned, I might be asking the same question, just asking a little differently. I, it almost seems a little creepy to me that, in light of such a powerful quote from a teacher, talking about the experience of students losing classmates, losing family members, going to 10 funerals over the course of the pandemic, that we then look at things like, "Well, how'd you do on the test?" And, you know, it almost seems like there's such a disconnect there. So my question would be, and maybe this is part of the self-reporting, but are there other things that we look at that these schools can call wins, that maybe don't show up on test scores? That they can celebrate, "Hey, we did this. We made this. We made this impact in these students' lives." You're not going to see it on the M-step, but what a difference it made in these kids' lives.
Yeah, that's a great question. Last year, we collected more data, not the 2122, but the 2021 school year, asking us about other kinds of things that were happening in kids' lives. I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but I can forward you the page of the report from last year. But we do ask about that.
Right.
One thing that I didn't have time to show today is that we actually see culture and climate in these schools improving over time, especially in the 2021 school year. We had very high rates of both principal and teachers' reports of culture and climate. They felt very supportive of the administrators and how they were working with their students. So that was, I think, something we were not expecting to see in the midst of a pandemic.
Thank you.
And the improvement in culture and climate often serves as prelude to improvement in student achievement.
And in teacher retention.
Right, exactly right. And student retention affecting student achievement. So there are a number of different--
Yeah.
--sort of causal elements. Who am I telling about causality?
Anytime, Michael.
Other state board members, other reflections? Ms. Lipton, back to you first. I'm sorry, Mr. McMillan for a first bite of the apple, and then Ms. Lipton for a second.
Thanks for the presentation. Getting a little bit to what the president mentioned, was there any, it seems like the interviews were mainly the government employees, the, I mean, the school employees. Was there any, you know, how about students, parents, you know, is there, you know, what's their perceptions? Was there any data on that?
No, unfortunately, we don't have data from students or from parents. There's a limited amount that we can do with the funding we have.
Okay.
Also, it's very hard to get students to respond to surveys, so we've tried that in other projects before.
Okay, well, that, yeah, I mean, there's, I mean, there's just an incentive for, you know, you give, you put money into something and you get some better results. I don't, I'm not surprised about that. I'm wondering, like, how, was there any, any way of measuring what was most effective, what was least effective? How, what kind of metrics would that be? I mean, I know these are all individual circumstances, so, you know, making generalities is maybe not even all that helpful in some instances, but, you know, I understood that there's some collaboration and that MDE is kind of saying, "Hey, this worked over here. How's it working over there?" I mean, you know, I know, I don't know what, exactly the amount of money that we've been devoting to this, but, you know, I could, I could see some people at least saying, you know, "How are you measuring effectiveness?"
Yeah.
You're interviewing the people that are going to say, "I need more money." That's not a surprise. And that we're doing a good job. You know, that's not a surprise. So, like, how is a third party, I mean, I know you guys are partners, there's not really much criticism of your partner, MDE, or maybe none, but, you know, is there, has there been some least effective and most effective things that you've seen?
Yeah, no, those are all great questions. I would direct you to the slide 11, I think it was, that does have that very busy graphic to show you kind of how partnership stacks up against other kinds of turnaround reforms.
Right, I was trying to, yeah.
So effect sizes are hard to talk about in education research. They generally tend to be pretty small. It takes a lot to move education effectiveness over time. But what you can see is that partnership schools are actually doing quite a bit better than many other similar kinds of reforms, not all. So the Tennessee I-zone has one that has been shown to kind of blow everything out of the water in terms of early effectiveness of that reform. So that's how we are thinking about how do we kind of look at effectiveness comparatively to other kinds of districts, other kinds of similar interventions in other states. We are beginning to run some models that are looking at how districts use their 21H funds and how that kind of use was associated with increases or decreases. We've also looked at models that look at culture and climate in districts to see if districts with the higher, or schools with higher-rated culture and climate seem to be improving at faster rates. We find that, yes, they are, and that's preliminary work right now. I would say this is sort of a typical way to evaluate an intervention. It's very difficult to take an intervention like this, which is very context-specific, and say, "Let's think about the six things that districts are doing differently that are going to make them more effective." We are working on doing that, but because we are not surveying districts that are not partnership districts, we don't believe that we can really get at a causal effect of that.
And then, you know, my, I kind of already touched on it, but is there any criticisms? I know that you're partners with MDE, but nonetheless, it wouldn't hurt, I mean, I'm hoping that if you saw criticisms, that you would articulate it. Is there anything MDE can be doing better, you know, in dealing with the partnership districts?
I will say that though we're partners, I'm also a professor of education policy and economics at MSU. I have a very long career in this work, and I have never pandered to a partner. So I think Dr. Rice and Dr. Pearson can tell you that. That being said, yeah, so early in the intervention, we were finding some issues with some of the liaisons. Immediately, OPD went with those data and thought about how to restructure that role. We also talked to OPD early on about the compliance focus that we were hearing about in terms of the partnership agreements, and I think OPD shifted pretty quickly to think about how to make that less of a compliance focus. If you read through the reports, this is, you know, again, a summary, I think you'll find a lot that we say could be improved. And I think that's an important thing, that OPD then, every year, puts out a response talking about how they are looking at the data and what they're going to do to improve based on the data we've given them.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Dr. Strunk, Ms. Lipton, to you.
Yeah, the one question that I just wanted to ask, does the partnership model allow for any partnership district-to-partnership district collaboration? In other words, is, and I don't know the answer to this, does the model allow for a district to hone in on something that they're really excited about and then sort of share it with other partnership districts? Or does it have to go through either the ISD or the department in order to?
Yeah.
How does the body feel?
I'm going to let Dr. Pearson answer that one, I think.
Yeah, we have conducted retreats with all partnership districts probably five times in the last three and a half years, and when we have those retreats, we usually have a particular topic and work to. And when we discuss those topics, districts then work together to ask, you know, "What did you do? How did you do that? And that looks good." So then liaisons work together with those districts to help them understand what questions they had and how they could incorporate that into their district. So we've had a little bit of a partnership in that regard. But since the districts are all over the state--
Yeah.
--and about 12 ISDs, that's why in round four, we're working hard when we restructured our model to have incorporate the ISD involvement to a greater degree.
Thank you.
For members, any other questions or comments? Let me play cleanup. First of all, we appreciate the presentation very much and the partnership. Second of all, there have been lots of lessons learned. Many of them are embedded in this presentation. Others have been the subject of conversations within the department and with partnership districts, either current or past and soon-to-be new. We have a new wave of partnership districts that will come into effect at the end of November with the announcement of the index system results. That will require a new set of partnership agreements informed by the history to which you refer in your report. And we anticipate that the partnership district model will be strengthened by that history, by extension by your research. I do want to not lose sight of two points that were raised. It is not all about money, by any means, but that it is not all about money doesn't mean that it isn't at all about money. It certainly is in part about money. And currently, there's $6.7 million in Section 21H funding in the state for 97 partnership district schools. For anybody who likes math, you know that that's slightly under $70,000 per partnership district school within a partnership district. You reflect upon that, it is less than an additional teacher for each partnership district school, clearly not going to move a needle in and of itself. So the dollars, woefully inadequate now, will be even more so with the next round of partnership districts, and it will be incumbent upon the state legislature to reflect upon Section 21H and rethink that in the context of a larger number of partnership districts, number one, and number two, coming out of a pandemic. That said, it is also true that a rising tide raises all boats, and it is true that some of the funding to which you referred will have an impact on all boats, that is to say, all schools, all districts, all children in the state, and that that will have a benefit globally. That's the good news, from an achievement perspective and a growth perspective. From a research perspective, of course, it makes for more challenging conversations around correlation versus causality. But the increase in GSRP funding of $168 million to move us ultimately from 37,000 children to 60,000 children getting preschool, that's a big deal. That's a rising tide raises all ships. You referred, for example, to the $575 million for the addressing of the teacher shortage, our seventh goal, the state's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan, the first time the state legislature has put in any significant money to address the teacher shortage, effective fiscal year '23, in a little bit shy of a month coming up here. $245 million more for children's mental health, $210 million more for school safety, a $450 per kid increase in per pupil foundational allowance, a 5.2% increase in foundational allowance. All of those are not targeted funding efforts to improve partnership districts, but they are efforts that will help improve, one, the teaching profession, two, the support around students and teachers, and three, ultimately, we imagine, student achievement. So I think there is an improved financial picture. It is not focused on Section 21H, and there should be more reflection on Section 21H. But in fairness, there's a whole lot more to the State School Aid Act than simply Section 21H, which affects partnership districts.
Absolutely.
The third piece is, you showed a graphic early in the presentation, it was on slide 13, and perhaps if you could go back to that, and you hearken to the beginning of the pandemic, and you noticed--
Am I getting there? I'm going to just see what's on your end. Got it.
There we go.
There you go.
Yeah.
So I want to just focus on the spring of 2020, the beginning of the pandemic, which you focused on. And you noted the higher death rates, very substantially higher death rates, double, doubly high death rates in partnership versus non-partnership districts. So that was enormously disruptive and saddening and trauma-producing early. I think the other point that we need to make, which you alluded to, but I want to just underscore it here, is that it ripples through other decision-making for the rest of the pandemic, at least to date. So it affects decisions of parents, staff, superintendents, boards about virtual versus in-person instruction. It affects decision-making about whether to go to school on a given day or to stay home on a given day. And what we know is that part of success, not all of success, but part of success is just showing up. And it's more effective to be in person, as we've said for two and a half years, than it is to be at a distance. And so these collective decisions of parents, boards, superintendents, and, 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 about where children are educated, affect student achievement. Last year, overall student attendance dropped in the state to approximately 89%. Pre-pandemic, it was 93%. You know that attendance rates, as a rule, Professor, don't drop four percentage points in a short period of time, or for that matter, move up four percentage points in a short period of time. In addition, chronically absent rates increased, nearly doubled to just over 38% compared to approximately 20% pre-pandemic. And for those of you who are not aware, the term chronically absent, which is a little bit of a misnomer, is defined as students who missed 10% or more possible days during the scheduled school year. So if you are in attendance 90% of the time, you are considered chronically absent by that definition. That's a federal definition, right? I share that because there are a lot of things that were happening in the pandemic. Many of those were happening to everybody. Some of those were particularly acute in partnership districts. Among those elements that were more substantially acute were the impact of death, not simply in the instant, but rippling through decision-making, number one. The adverse impact of decisions made years ago that chipped away at supply of teachers and that created a teacher shortage in the state more acute in partnership districts. And then the broader challenge of coming out of this morass, inadequate funding, exacerbated teacher shortage, death, and fear of subsequent illness and, and death. Some districts in the state did not experience that. Indeed, I might suggest that there are educators that, though they were aware of the pandemic, were relatively unscathed by the pandemic in their communities, temporally, financially, from a health perspective. The same is not true for our poorest districts in the state of Michigan. We appreciate your time. We appreciate your partnership. Have a great day. Thank you so much.
Thanks for having me.
For members, we're 10:39, and the next item on the committee, the whole agenda, is presentation on M-step results and release. This presentation focuses on the Spring 2022 assessment results, including results from M-step, PSAT, and SAT assessments. We welcome our presenters, Dr. Delsa Chapman, Deputy Superintendent of the Division of Educator, Student, and School Support, and Mr. Andy Middlestead, Director of the Office of Educational Assessment and Accountability. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. This is an informational presentation. No board action is required. Presenters, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Rice, and good morning, Board. Here with me, yes, is Mr. Andy Middlestead, our Director of the Office of Educational Assessment and Accountability, who will share our results from the Spring '22 M-step and Michigan Merit exams accordingly. Andy?
Good morning, Board. Like Dr. Chapman said, I am here to talk through a little bit about the test results from this last spring's M-step and also the Michigan Merit exam in high school. Last spring, students were administered state summative assessments to measure their progress toward achieving proficiency on Michigan State content standards. As we know, and we've heard about a little bit, testing requirements have fluctuated over the past several years. To summarize, in 2019, all assessments were administered. In the spring of 2020, we did not administer any summative assessments as a result of a waiver from the U.S. Department of Education. In 2021, assessments were administered, but participation was optional for Michigan students. This last spring, 2022, all assessments were again required and administered. This last spring, we saw student participation rate return to over 95%. For reference, in the spring of 2021, student participation was around 20, or 70% on average. For reference, in the spring of 2021, student participation was around 20, or 70% on average. Getting into some of the results and the details, I have a few summary points. On average, at the district level, from third to seventh grade for English Language Arts, 54.5% of school districts increased their achievement scores, and 4% of districts maintained their achievement levels compared to last year, 2021. For mathematics, 55.9% of school districts increased their achievement scores, and 7.4% of those districts maintained their levels. Now, shifting to the statewide student level, ELA scores declined slightly in elementary and dropped more in middle and high school. For math, scores increased in three of seven grades. I'll now walk through some tables that get more into detail of these results. This is a chart that looks at district change for English Language Arts. Again, those first bullet points I talked about counted traditional districts or charter schools that had a change in proficiency from '21 to '22. Again, for ELA, 54.5% of school districts increased their achievement scores, and 4% of districts maintained their achievement levels compared to the prior year. This is the same table, but yet for mathematics. For mathematics, 55.9% of school districts increased achievement scores, and 7.4% of those districts maintained their levels. Now, we're going to switch to student proficiency overall as a state. You'll see on the chart, 2019 is at the top, '21 in the middle, and the most recently, 2022 is at the bottom. State results for English Language Arts saw decreases in proficiency for each of grades three through seven. Switching to math, state results for math saw increases in proficiency for grades four and five and decreases in grades three, six, and seven. Switching gears to eighth grade. So the PSAT 8-9, which as a reminder is our eighth grade test for English Language Arts and math, we saw that ELA scores decreased while math scores increased. For the SAT, the SAT is our ELA and mathematics portion of the Michigan Merit Exam, proficiency scores decreased in both ELA and math. For social studies, we do social studies in grades five, eight, and 11. Social studies saw an increase in proficiency in grade eight, but there were decreases in grades five and 11. For science, science is a little different type of slide. We have scores here from the most recent school year, 2022, and due to standard setting with low participation numbers for science assessments in 2021, performance levels and cut scores had to be reset in 2022. This requires us to start a new trend line for science, beginning with 2022. I'm now going to walk us through some subgroup breakdowns for ELA and math. We'll start with ELA slides, and then we'll switch to math to bring us home at the end. For ELA, we saw decreases in proficiency for both not economically disadvantaged and economically disadvantaged from 2019 to 2022. However, between '21 and '22, not economically disadvantaged saw an increase in proficiency, and economically disadvantaged students held steady. However, a note, be aware that in 2022, the assessment sample includes many lower SES districts that did not test in the spring of 2021. For race and ethnicity for English Language Arts, we saw decreases across the board from 2019 to '22. When looking at the '21 to '22 comparison, students who are American Indian or Alaskan native, Asian, two or more races, or white increased in proficiency. Black or African American, Hispanic or Latino, Native Hawaiian or other Pacific Islander groups saw declines in their scores. For students with disabilities in English Language Arts, both students with and without disabilities saw decreases in proficiency from 2019 to 2022. When we look at '21 to '22, students with disabilities saw an increase of 0.7, while students without disabilities displayed a decrease. In English Language Arts, both students identified as English learners and students that identified as not being an English learner saw decreases in proficiency from 2019 to 2022. When we look at '21 to '22, English learner students saw an increase of 2% proficiency, while non-English learners displayed a decrease. For ELA, looking at gender, for English Language Arts, both male and female students saw decreases between 2019 and '22. There continued to be decreases between '21 and '22, though to a smaller degree. Switching hats to math. As we see for mathematics, we saw decreases in proficiency for both not economically disadvantaged and economically disadvantaged from 2019 to 2022. However, between '21 and '22, both groups showed an increase, though not economically dis, not economically disadvantaged students' increase was larger. Again, be aware that the 2022 assessment sample includes many lower SES districts that did not test in the spring of '21. For race ethnicity for mathematics, we saw decreases across the board from 2019 to 2022. When looking at '21 to '22, students who are American Indian or Alaskan native, Asian, two or more races, or white increased in proficiency. Hispanic or Latino students held steady. Black or African American, Native Hawaiian or Pacific Islander groups, they saw declines. In mathematics, both students with and without disabilities saw decreases in proficiency from 2019 to '22. When we look at '21 to '22, students with disabilities saw an increase of 0.5, while students without disabilities displayed a slight decrease. In mathematics, both students identified as English learners and students that identified as not being an English learner saw decreases in proficiency from '19 to '22. When we look at '21 to '22, English learner students saw an increase of 1.9% proficiency, while non-English learners displayed a decrease. For math, both female and male students saw decreases between 2019 and 2022. There continue to be decreases between '21 and '22, though to a smaller degree. That's a lot of numbers. So, thank you.
That is indeed a lot of numbers. Thank you, Dr. Chapman, Mr. Middlestead, Dr. Ulrich.
So, thank you for this presentation and all of the numbers, but I want to talk about language for just a second. Can we maybe define what proficiency means? Because I think a lot of times in this state, when someone hears the word proficient, they assume if you haven't reached that level, it means you can't do it, whereas the word proficient actually means expert, and I don't think we use it in either of those, those ways. So can you just take a moment to define what proficiency, from our perspective, actually means?
Sure. Proficiency, so we have four performance levels on our assessments, not proficient, partially proficient, proficient, and advanced. When we do presentations like this, or when we switch gears to talking accountability with the index system or other means, we use the word proficient, yes or no. And proficient is students that are proficient or advanced on their test. And you're right, these proficiency labels come from an activity that we do. I mentioned it with the science, with the standard setting activity, creating performance levels, and there's language that we can provide to the board about each of these performance levels, about what a proficient student should be able to do with regards to the content level standards for their grade level. So we can provide that language, but we've actually been having conversations too about, do we need to look at these labels again or not? I mean, these have been the labels for a number of years at this point, and we're probably due to talk about the labels, but I can certainly provide the language and the definitions about what each of these labels mean, that would be helpful.
Thank you.
Do you have a followup?
No, that's, I just wanted to put that on the table so people understood what we're talking about here.
This, this state assessment and state assessments across the country are substantially higher bar than they were back in the day. This, this is not the meep that, that board members or, or board members' children may have taken back, back in the day. It is a substantially more challenging assessment with a higher bar to determine proficiency. Other, other questions or comments, please? Questions or comments? Ms. Lipton?
Thank you for that. I guess just from your, your expert perspective, given the pandemic, given all that we know, were you surprised? I mean, does anything in this surprise you? I mean, just, I mean, I'll just throw it out for me, it doesn't surprise me that a global pandemic is going to have some effect. I'm just wondering what your, you know, takeaways are as an expert.
You know, straight up, my opinion, you know, am I surprised? No, I'm not surprised. I think as we entered, we finished 2020 and entered '21 and '22, I certainly think there was conversations and hope that we would see a dip, and then we would bounce back up, but as time has gone on, and I think you do see it around the country and other states and many places, that these scores are, are going down, and the recovery, or whatever you want to call it, is going to take a, a longer period of time. It's not going to happen overnight. So I, I'm not surprised, and we certainly will look at the '21, '22 school year that's being better than the prior school year, but it certainly was not normal. There was a lot of struggles that we heard from Dr. Strunk as well, working through that school year. So I was not surprised myself, I think, and, and it is similar to other states that we've looked at around the country, and that we know there's work to do to try to bring it back up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Mr. Middlestead, Dr. Pew, to you.
And just backing up what Ellen's question was, also, like, the timing of the test? I don't know if we really speak to that.
How long it takes?
Not just that, when the test was taken, when children were, many of the students were returning back to in-person schooling, so.
Sure. Yeah, the, the M-Step and the SAT and all of our summative assessments happen in the spring of every school year. They begin the second week of April, and they go until mid-May. And this last spring, we actually reduced, I use the word footprint, we keep shrinking our footprint of when these tests occur in the spring. So now there's a five, a single five-week window where they take these tests from the second week of April until the middle of May. Does that help answer your question?
Yeah, and if I recall, it was right, like, right at one of the, all these years are blending together for me, but I, I recall that it was like when the pandemic was hitting one of those peaks.
Twenty, yeah. 2021, yes. That's exactly what happened, is we had to roll out our testing, testing system, and again, it was optional for students to take, but it was, if I recall, it was the same week where we sent out the spotlight that said, "Time to start testing," but then the governor also said, "Send people home from school because there's another peak happening."
Yeah.
But that certainly happened in the spring of '21, that.
Yeah, and we've seen those, those blips, like, around that time of year, whether it's post-spring break or, or whatever reason we were seeing those, those blips. So the pandemic, yes, but then also, but the pandemic because of what was going on during that time with the pandemic.
Other, other questions? Comments? Okay, let's, let's go back to slide four, please.
Participation number, yep.
Yep.
Dr. Pew, to your, to your point, in the spring of '21, we had very high levels of COVID. They were the highest in the country for a period of month or, or more. We used that as part of our argument to the, the U.S. Department of Education to permit us to waive assessments a second year. The U.S. Department of Education permitted us to waive high accountability measures associated with those assessments, but not the assessments themselves. We had to carry on and do the assessment. 70% of our children tested in that very high COVID period, compared to 95-plus percent in a typical year, including this past spring. Okay? So that's what you recall, and that affected results in a whole host of different ways. We believe that, that one of the ways it affected results is that many of the young people who didn't test in the spring of '21 were among the more economically disadvantaged students. We believe arguably that had everyone tested in 2021, those results might have been lower, and that the rebound that one would see from '21 to '22 as a result would be more substantial. It's a little bit suppressed because there are 25%, 25 percentage points fewer children testing than the average year in spring of 2021. So you don't necessarily see the rebound because it's not apples-apples '21 to '22. But I wanted to just point that out because I do think it, it affects the look at '21, and by extension, the deltas between '19 and '21 and '21 and '22 particularly. It does not affect '19, it does not affect '22, and it does not affect the, the thinking about the delta between '19 and '22, but it does in the interior, between '19 and '21, and more importantly, between '21 and '22. Let's go, if you would, please, to slide six, the M-Step results, district change for ELA. This shows that a majority of districts, not children, but a majority of districts increased from 2021 spring testing to 2022 spring testing. Go to the next slide, please. This slide again shows that a majority of districts, not students, but a majority of districts increased from spring '21 testing to spring '22 testing. So a majority of districts showing a rebound in, in '22 off '21 results. Go, please, to, to the ELA economically disadvantaged, slide page 14, slide 14, please. You will notice here that spring '19 to spring '21, like across the country, results dropped. Pre-pandemic results were greater than pandemic results across the country. You will notice that in spring '22, just to re-point out what Mr. Middlestead said, there was a rebound for non-economically disadvantaged students, middle-class students, which is very clear here, 1.7 percentage points. It's a pretty healthy increase in an average year. For economically disadvantaged students, it appears to be flat year to year, but because so many economically disadvantaged children did not test in '21, that level is a little bit artificially high. It is not high, but it is artificially statistically higher than it would have been, one imagines, had the entire population been tested, had the entire population been able to be tested, because remember, many parents were keeping their children home in the winter and into the spring of 2021, and there were school districts that were remote, not a lot, but a number, that were remote for the whole year. That reduced the number of test takers, were substantially among the economically disadvantaged, which artificially raised the percentage considered at or above proficient, which diminishes the gap closing that you would otherwise have seen between '21 and '22. If we could, please, could you please go to slide 19? Again, for mathematics, everybody declines nationally, '19 to '21. The question is, what do you do coming out of a pandemic? What do we do coming out of a pandemic? And you will notice, this is a paradigm. And you will notice, this is a paradox, but it's important to note, you will notice that both non-economically disadvantaged children, middle-class children, grew from 21 to 22. So too did economically disadvantaged students grow from 21 to 22. Now, the growth is not as substantial as we would have liked, number one. It does not get us back to 2019, number two. And we were not starting off a base that we were happy with or comfortable with, number three. I'm simply talking about the rebound now, coming out of a pandemic, and both non-economically disadvantaged and economically disadvantaged children rebounding in mathematics. The paradox is, because we tested so many more economically disadvantaged students in 2022 than in 2021, our mix in 2022 was substantially poorer than our mix in 2021. And so the improvement in student achievement as a whole was greater, but incapable of being calculated given a number of young people who did not take tests, a function of individual decisions of individual parents in many individual districts. Recall, Board, that though we filed for a waiver request from the U.S. Department of Education not to have to do state Summit of Assessments, when we were told that we would have to do state Summit of Assessments, we informed local school districts that irrespective of whether they were in-person or virtual, and most were in-person, but there were some that were virtual, that they would have to offer state Summit of Assessments for every child in the state. And there were young people, not an enormous number, who were virtual, but whose parents chose to have them come in to test. But in many cases, parent decisions kept them at home. In some cases, the civic school district decisions were responsible for the remote instruction. I think the takeaway here, though, is there is a rebound, and it's an understated rebound because the 2021 numbers are overstated. I'm happy to try to explain that in a different fashion. But I do think that it bears mentioning and putting on the table. Students and staff in a very complicated year last year, in a very tricky staccato year last year, raised their game. We have to continue to do that in the coming years.
Mr. McMillan.
Yeah, I mean, I think these numbers, I think we could decipher whatever we want out of these numbers. We could show that COVID protocols were good, COVID protocols were bad, state leaders did a good job in education, state leaders did a bad job in education. More money is needed. You know, maybe taking tests with masks versus without masks has an impact. Parents keeping kids at home because of certain things, districts doing stuff differently. I think we could read into these numbers whatever we want. I just, whenever I look at state assessments, I'm always just reminded that they are Common Core-aligned. And often I tell school leaders that just don't worry as much about the tests because if you actually teach well, not Common Core, but actually instruct the students well, your kids may not do as well on a Common Core-aligned test in math in ELA, but your kids are getting a better education. And just explain that to the parents. So I'm a little bit indifferent with these numbers. And like I said, I think you can read, and I don't know, but I'm sure there's some numbers that aren't in here that could be troubling to some, could be enlightening to others. I think the incentive is to probably put a narrative, the results in a narrative that wants to be given at a time like this. So that's just my thoughts.
Okay. I appreciate you sharing those. Certainly, we covered quite a bit of waterfront in this presentation today. We appreciate your time, presenters. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It is 11:06, Board. The next item on the committee, the whole agenda, is a presentation on literacy. This presentation will cover professional learning opportunities for language essentials for teachers of reading and spelling, letters training, accelerated learning training, literacy essentials, diversity in literature, and promising practices to empower educators further in developing literacy acquisition for young learners in Michigan. We welcome our presenters, backed by popular demand. Dr. Delsa Chapman, Deputy Superintendent of the Division of Educators, Student, and School Support. Dr. Corinne Edwards, in a tremendous moment of duty this morning, Director of the Office of Educational Support, and Ms. Shelley Probstel, Manager of the Literacy Unit in the Office of Educational Support. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. This is an informational presentation. No board action is required. Presenters, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. And to the Board, we appreciate the opportunity today to share the efforts and updates thereof regarding literacy here in this great state of Michigan. And now, Dr. Corinne Edwards, our Director of the Office of Educational Support, will share the highlights and overview of the presentation. Dr. Edwards?
Thank you, Dr. Chapman. Good morning, everyone. The Michigan Top Ten Strategic Education Plan outlines eight goals that, when implemented successfully, will support learning and impact life outcomes for learners across our great state. Goal number two, improve early literacy achievement, is a key goal in helping us realize our vision for Michigan learners. Our goal this morning is to provide the Board with an update on our current statewide efforts to support and move forward our Strategic Education Plan Goal Number Two. We will provide an overview of our literacy-related office initiatives, which include the Letters Training Grant, the Dyslexia Guidance Document, Accelerated Learning Initiatives, Literacy Essentials, the Authors of Color Compendium, updates on our Michigan CLSD Grant, Family Engagement, and the Promising Practices Exchange. I will now turn it over to Mrs. Shelley Probstel, our Literacy Unit Manager, to walk us through these updates.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. Thank you, Dr. Chapman. Let's begin with Letters Updates. Section 35A10 provides funding for Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling, known as Letters. Letters teaches the skills needed to master the foundation and fundamentals of reading and writing instruction, which are phonological awareness, phonics fluency, vocabulary comprehension, and written language. Letters is an excellent investment in further developing teachers' language and literacy expertise to understand why reading is complex, the source of reading difficulties, and how to successfully teach all students, including those with significant and persistent literacy-related needs. This year, Letters was expanded to include pre-K to grade six educators, pre-K to grade 12 certified special education personnel. Currently, over 3,000 educators are registered to participate in four cohorts. Training for Cohort Three will start in September of 2022. Cohort Four training will start in January of 2023. Letters incorporates reading research conducted in neuroscience, cognitive development, psychology, and linguistics so that educators have solid evidence on how to teach reading to benefit all students. Multiple research studies in these areas inform Letters, including Scarborough's rope. For many students, learning to read is a challenge. Scarborough's rope captures the complexity of learning to read. It is made of lower strands and upper strands. And when all of these component parts intertwine, it results in skilled and accurate fluent reading and strong comprehension. This also captures the simple view of reading, which really isn't simple at all. It's multiplication problem, meaning language times word recognition equals skilled reading. If students cannot decode printed English, they cannot comprehend it. If students cannot comprehend spoken English, they cannot comprehend written English either. So you will notice in the subsequent data slides, pre-test scores, then post-test scores for units one and two, demonstrating an increase in teacher knowledge. In the spirit of lifelong learning, we appreciate our educators who have committed to continue to learning about the science of reading. 99.4% of participants who have completed Volume One pre-test with an average score of 66.6%, which demonstrates their understanding of concepts in units one through four. The chart demonstrates increased teacher learning for Unit One, which is the challenges of learning how to read, and Unit Two, titled "The Speech Sounds of English", which has key concepts around developing phonological skills. These units refer to cognitive science and demonstrate that fluent reading is a complex mental activity dependent on specific circuits in the language and visual areas of the brain. The teaching of reading is complex, once again, and an increase of teacher knowledge by 30% is notable. The Data for Early Childhood Letters, which is tailored to pre-K teachers, displays a Volume One pre-test score of 58.6%. In the Letters EC platform, Unit One covers early literacy foundations, and Unit Two covers oral language development. Educators in Unit One demonstrated a post-test average score of 86.5% and a Unit Two post-test average score of 87.5%. This is also nearly an increase of knowledge in 30%. Ultimately, the value is not in the post-test scores but on how the new learning impacts our students. Notice the positive reflections that tell a story of seasoned educators finding value and staying in the profession as they learn more about the science of reading. Teachers feel like they have a new lease on their careers and want to stay in the profession longer. They report on learning some methods based on new research and feel they have hands-on opportunities to practice what students need to learn. Luisa Votz, one of the primary authors, is quoted as saying, "Teachers change lives. Informed teachers can explain language to students, including sounds, spellings, and word meanings that might be confusing." Letters is a blended learning platform with online, independent learning, and live sessions. The feedback data after each live session indicates that 97% of respondents agree that the session content will enhance their ability to use research-based practices in their role. 99% say they can apply skills and concepts that they learned. So this wraps up our Letters portion of the presentation. We have some exciting news. In August, MDE released a new resource guide to help Michigan educators improve the literacy skills of children and build more successful learners. The Handbook aligns with Michigan's Top Ten Strategic Education Plan, Goal Two, Improve Early Literacy Achievement, and Goal Five, Increase the Percentage of All Students Who Graduate From High School. The Michigan Dyslexia Handbook, A Guide to Accelerating Learner Outcomes in Literacy, is designed to help educators develop a shared understanding of best practices to prevent reading difficulties associated with the primary consequences of dyslexia, a reading disorder primarily characterized by word-level reading difficulties originating from phonological processing weaknesses. The Handbook also provides practices needed to inform instruction and intervention methods for learners with dyslexia characteristics. The Michigan Dyslexia Handbook was developed by MDE with contributions and reviewed by dyslexia and literacy experts from Michigan and across the nation. The Handbook brings together state literacy efforts that support educators' use of practices aligned with reading science or based on scientifically-informed theories to accelerate reading outcomes for all learners. Speaking of accelerated learning, it was once considered a means to support advanced learners only. Accelerated learning strategies, however, keep all students moving forward on their intended grade-level trajectories by strategically preparing them for success in current grade-level content. Acceleration focuses on teaching what only must be learned at a given level instead of trying to teach everything that a student did not learn in a previous grade or grades. Acceleration requires teachers to identify crucial content that they need to teach and that students need to learn so that students can access current grade-level material. MDE's Accelerated Learning Guidance provides Michigan educators with educator-guidance resources, state and national presentations for literacy learning through a webinar series, essential skills for literacy standards and content, and relaying to educators that the focus on Tier One grade-level instruction is integral in accelerated learning processes. The Literacy Essentials have served as a gateway to supporting literacy success. All literacy educators are encouraged to understand the use of the suite of the Michigan Association of Intermediate School Administrators, General Education Leadership Network, and the Early Literacy Task Force Essential Instructional Practices in Early Literacy, also known as the Literacy Essentials, which are research-proven, effective approaches to markedly improve literacy skills among Michigan students. The Essentials, found at literacyessentials.org, help educators increase Michigan's capacity to improve children's literacy by identifying a set of research-supported instructional practices that have a positive influence on literacy development. Included in this suite is a coaching module. Post-pandemic, students are back in the classrooms and so are teachers and coaches. It's a great time to bring focus to the research-supported early literacy coaching model and practices. The purpose of the model is to support intermediate school districts and local education agencies to understand and implement research-supported literacy coaching practices that should support strong coaching programs and drive professional learning around literacy coaching throughout the state. With administrator support and multi-year initiatives, literacy coaching provides powerful, job-embedded, ongoing professional development with the primary goal of enhancing classroom literacy instruction through improving teacher expertise. Effective literacy coaching supports teachers in successfully navigating the daily challenges they face in their classrooms. As a result, instructional capacity and sustainability within schools increase. In addition, through improving teacher expertise and the quality of core instruction, student achievement increases. This model provides a visual for coaches to spend 75% of their time working with teachers, literacy coaches, and literacy leaders, conferencing, modeling, applying assessment literacy, observing, and co-planning. Coaches may spend 25% of their time working as a literacy leader. This model serves as our map to lead us to our destination in improving early literacy achievement. Just to recap, we've shared Letters Professional Learning, Guidance for Students with Characteristics of Dyslexia, Efforts to Move All Students Forward with Accelerated Learning, Essential Instructional Practices, and the Coaching Model. At the forefront of all of our topics shared today embeds equity. The MDE continues to create a multitude of resources to help Michigan educators bring more diversity to the classroom. The 2020-21 Equity and Literacy Guidance Document provides a layer of foundation for educators in the why and the how to incorporate equity and literacy within the classroom. In addition, the MDE and the aid of the Education Field and the Library of Michigan worked to compile a living list of authors of color and their great works. MDE held a Diversity in Literacy Conference webinar series featuring Dr. Goldie Muhammad in February of 2021 and then succeeding webinars throughout the year to continue building diverse libraries. To reinforce the foundation being laid with the Michigan educators regarding diversity and literacy, the Michigan Association for Media in Education has put forth a myriad of resources for educator use. With the Diversity in Literature Initiatives, MDE promotes literature that reflects and honors the lives of all people. The literature gives the opportunity for students to see themselves in the words that they read and the pictures that they see. These opportunities support a greater understanding and celebrate new cultures and experiences leading to a broader and richer understanding of the world that we live in. Moving on to family engagement, relationships are the cornerstone of family engagement. For this reason, MDE has partnered with community leaders, schools, and the Council of Chief State School Officers and the National Association for Family, School, and Community Engagement to combine research and best practices to provide resources targeting family engagement in the school and program improvement process. The first link, MDE Family Engagement, provides guidance for programs, school districts, and schools to use in expanding homeschool program partnerships to support learning and healthy development. The second link, Family Engagement for Literacy, provides resources for school administration, including a playbook for developing equitable family-school partnerships to support high early literacy outcomes. The playbook includes opportunities to share resources with pre-K3 parents, also available in Arabic and Spanish, along with strategies to ensure that family engagement represents the diversity of the entire school community. In the last year, MDE has shared these resources with districts across the state in Van Buren, Oakland, Detroit, Flint, Muskegon, Pontiac, and Benton Harbor. This week, professional learning for family engagement will be shared with literacy coaches across the state. across the state. When families and schools partner to support children's literacy achievement, children have more opportunities to learn and practice essential literacy skills and grow as readers and writers. When all of these components shared today are together, you can begin to see a comprehensive literacy plan. MDE was awarded a federal grant totaling nearly sixteen million over a five-year period. The grant is also to assist districts with creating a birth-to-grade twelve comprehensive literacy plan. Five districts were awarded to work with the department and other statewide literacy partners. The districts include Benton Harbor, Pontiac, Muskegon Heights, Detroit, and Flint. The districts have completed the first year of the grant, and all have reported strengthening their local literacy plans by implementing innovative programs such as professional learning, letters, tutoring programs, interventions, and building disciplinary literacy for grades six through twelve. In the spring, MDE team visited LEAs to see evidence of their efforts in improving literacy. Below are just a few of the great things shared in the visits. Lastly, MDE has partnered with the Michigan Association of Intermediate School Administrators, Mesa, to develop Michigan's Top Ten Strategic Education Plan Promising Practices Exchange. The Promising Practices Exchange, a public-facing repository of promising practices that have been implemented with successes at intermediate school districts and local education agencies, both in traditional public schools and public school academies, launched on August eleventh. From August eleventh to October fourteenth, 2022, MDE is seeking promising practices that support the Top Ten Strategic Education Plans Goal Number Two, Improve Early Literacy Achievement. The submissions are vetted by content experts and shared on the Promising Practices Exchange. These promising practices demonstrate improved outcomes for learners and can be viewed and replicated by other districts. You can access the Promising Practices Exchange at mypromisingpractices.org. At this point, I will hand the presentation over to Dr. Edwards for closing remarks.
Thank you, Shelley. And again, board, we thank you for your time as we presented our statewide efforts on literacy. At this time, we'll open up for any questions.
Board members' questions or comments. Mr. McMillan and Ms. Lipton.
Thank you for your presentation. Now, when I Google Letters, you know, I see things like there's a return to phonics. Is that accurate? Is this more of a more phonics? I know it's not intensive phonics, which people that I trust in education say is a better way, but I know that's controversial. But at least, is it heavier in phonics than other programs in the past?
I would say it's more comprehensive, covering all of the fundamentals of teaching reading, and it includes probably more phonological awareness, which previously hasn't been addressed and also is the primary consequence for students with dyslexia. So it's increasing that knowledge in those areas, but yet does hit all of the fundamentals for teaching reading.
Okay.
So it's very comprehensive.
I just, I remember the battles in the, you know, look see, and back in the nineties and maybe early two thousands in education, I was fighting to, you know, as they moved away from phonics. And as I'm understanding it, this is a move back towards phonics. I didn't know. Did you see that article in Time Magazine on Oakland schools in California and their push towards more phonics-based? And even the NAACP got involved and said, "We want, you know, get more phonics." We, you know, it's been a disaster when you pulled it out of the schools. So I didn't know if you're familiar with that.
It's a nationwide trend where many states are really kind of, you know, looking at this as a way to kind of bring some of it back, but in a comprehensive way, meaning like that multiplication problem that I described. If you can't do, if you can't, you know, have, if you don't have good word recognition skills, you're not going, times language, you're not going to be able to read. And if you don't have the good language skills and vocabulary understanding and oral language development at a very young age, then you're also not going to have good comprehension skills. So it's really the mix and very comprehensive, not necessarily going in one direction over another.
Other questions or Ms. Lipton? Thank you, Mr. McMillan.
Thank you so much for this presentation, and I really appreciate it. The first question I have is, so the thirty-five A ten FY twenty-three allocation of ten million. Okay, so that is, as I understand it, for the concept of training the teachers, okay? Okay. Does it piggyback or interface on what teachers are learning in their teacher preparation programs? Or is this would be something that is a new concept that's introduced to teachers through participating in this training program?
So ideally, yes, it would piggyback. And I also think, you know, teaching is a kind of a lifelong learning thing as well. And so as you have those students in front of you, and part of what Letters does is take you step by step through all the fundamentals of reading instruction, but also allows you to do that while you have students in the classroom and to work on case studies and practice what you're learning. So it's really, it's really a continuing learning progression for teachers.
And so just to follow up, so is this sort of, would this be something that they do on the weekends or after hours? Almost like, I'm an attorney, so we have continuing legal education requirements that we have to do outside of practice. So does that work this way as well?
Yes, yes. They receive enough, it's a two-year program for the K six, and they will receive enough to renew their certificate over that time. And it's offered, they can sign up for what works best for them. It's offered in the evenings or on Saturdays or during the day, depending on what works best for them and their districts and their context.
Is there a cost involved for teachers to do this?
No.
Okay.
No, that's what the funding covers, and it's, you know, equivalent to taking college courses.
Okay, so that, okay, that's great. And then just, one other question is, I noticed here it says currently over three thousand educators registered to participate in four different cohorts. Is that, in your opinion, is that enough capacity? In other words, everyone who wanted to, were they able to, or were some people told they have to wait?
We did have a short waiting list, but it's fluctuating all the time based on individual needs. We know we have about twenty-eight thousand educators that would be eligible, and so last year, the funding covered those three thousand, and then this year, we should be able to double that, so.
Thank you. And then just one last question. This is more of just a comment. I just wanted to point out the fact on Slide seventeen, the Michigan Comprehensive Literacy State Development Grants, the five communities that are listed, I would just point out that those are all promise zone communities in the state. I'm a big fan of our state promise zones, and I would just encourage you to just make note of that because there is a lot of great things going on in those school districts in the way of college attainment, and our promise zones all recognize that, like teachers as lifelong learners, students, it is a journey beginning at earliest preschool in terms of what do you want to do and where do you want to go to college? And so building that college-going culture is really important, and I just think it's very interesting and very promising that these are communities that are also promise zones. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. To your, to your point, four of the five of those are also partnership districts. The fifth would qualify but for an extenuating circumstance, so they were, they were chosen in part because of their need. Other, Dr. Pritchett, thank you very much.
Thank you. Back to the Letters training, which I understand has been received very well in the field. My question is, I'm an instructor, a teacher, I do this online, is my understanding. And I realize this would be district-specific, but is there some support then back? I go back into my classroom, I'm going to try to implement some of these practices, you know, do I have some support there? Again, I realize it's going to be district-specific to a certain extent, but is there some mechanisms in place where I can then come back and say, "You know what? I tried that, it really didn't work well, maybe I did something wrong," or, you know, "What did I miss here?"
Many of our literacy coaches are going through the training right now and plan to as well to help support that through our ISDs and through our LEAs. This year, we hope to design and set up an administrator training so that the administrator can provide support as well. And so we're looking at ways to really support those teachers who are really engaging and putting that commitment and effort into, you know, just increased knowledge of teaching reading. Also, we are asking them to sign up, like in cohorts. We know that schools, many of them communicate with us regularly on how they are registering, and so we've had to move things around so that they could take a certain cohort together because within that cohort, there might be like fifty-six different time slots that they could sign up for. So they are being very considerate about substitute teachers, teachers away from the classroom, and like they've come up with plans for how to do it in a phase-type fashion, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pritchett, Ms. Probstel. I see you, Ms. Lipton, for a second bite, looking to see if other people want a first bite before we go back to you. Ms. Lipton, back to you for a second bite.
There's a question that came to mind. So with the infusion of federal dollars for literacy coaching as a mechanism to help address the learning challenges that occurred during COVID, is there any thought? Because my guess is that these literacy coaches, they're separate from teachers, right? These are additional people coming into the schools? Okay. Is there any thought that they could also be a part of a Grow Your Own program as sort of an on-ramp into the teaching profession?
Most of the, they are certified teachers, and they're the ones that have the most, the highest credentials for literacy, and that's how they are selected within their ISDs and districts, yeah.
Not a separate preparation from teaching?
No.
Teacher plus.
Yes, and then they, but they do go through coaching training through our coaching network as well, just on, you know, evidence-based practices for good coaching and embedding that teacher learning. Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton, Ms. Lipton, Ms. Probstel. Other questions or thoughts, comments, or concerns? Ms. Hanson, do you have anything to share with us on Letters training?
I think it is wonderful. Years ago, we tried to implement it in our district. We did not have the coaching support. It goes back to what you're saying. You get that information, and you know it's valuable, and you know you, but then you don't have the supports in place, and this was years ago. So I'm sort of excited that it's coming back with supports because oftentimes, teachers are sort of given a new bandwagon to jump on, but without the supports that they need to be successful in the classroom, and they want to do it, and they want it to work, but they don't have that, you know, that background, you know, that they, what is working, how can I fine-tune this and all of that? So I think it's great.
Thank you very much for sharing that. Other reflections, board members, going once, twice, thrice? Ms. Probstel, if you could take us back to Slide Five, ostensibly titled Letters Data, it's the Scarborough's Rope, and maybe you can re-reflect on your answer to Mr. McMillan relative to Scarborough's Rope and sort of point us down to the bottom of the rope? Because I think what you were trying to do was acknowledge Mr. McMillan's point on the bottom of the rope, but also talking about the top of the rope, and I think this graphic helps get there.
It does, and it really does let you see how complex it is. And we know that if students don't, with our, with our instruction and our teaching, develop that, those word recognition skills, they're never going to get to that language comprehension point. And so we know that those things have to develop in tandem. We know that the more conversations, the more vocabulary that is being used with students as they're growing is helpful, but we also know that they have to be able to read the words before they're going to actually reach that comprehension place. So it's really understanding the development and the phases of, and there's, it's what's considered Aries phases of language development, which is in the Language Essentials, really having a strong basis and understanding how those things intertwine to get to the skilled reading that students need to be successful.
You got that rope word in there with the intertwine. That was good. I liked that. I thought that was terrific. So stronger doses of what a number of us had back in the day, but not, but not forgetting the importance of the comprehension skills. So it's not simply the smaller, important skill development pieces, the granular, not smaller as in less important, but the granular skills development pieces, but in addition, it's the word comprehension pieces as well.
And you need to know where students are at. Not all students need that, so you need to know where to take them next. It goes back to that accelerated learning and understanding assessment literacy and where students are and what they need to get to that next step and what's missing in the rope for them.
Thank you. Three thousand-plus teachers currently enrolled, ideally every teacher in the state with support, to Ms. Hanson's point, would go through Letters training and would get that deeper foundation of skills training that they could then share with young people. We think that it's that important, and we're going to continue to push that with the legislature. We think that this was a plus. We think the legislature did right on this. We simply think that it needs to be expanded to more teachers, particularly pre-K3. I heard the through sixth grade, and I respect that, but I also understand that it is our teachers of our youngest children who are most responsible for the development of literacy, recognizing that many of our kids have not developed those requisite skills fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, and their teachers need that training as well. The Dyslexia Guidance was put out last month. It is very, very helpful. We want all school districts to take a look at it, unpack it, and use it to support the educators of the twenty percent of our children that process language differently as they read. We think that's important. The Diversity in Literacy webinar series that we have had have been very, very well-attended, a thousand-plus educators each time. There's a real appetite for teachers to learn more about diverse literature because they understand that not only is it important to develop word recognition skills, but it's also important that young people feel engaged by literature, that they see a reason to go into literature, that they see themselves in literature, others in literature, and that they're able to walk through to other worlds in literature. So that's not necessarily the teaching of reading per se, but it's the feathering out and in the engagement with reading. Because after children break the code, it's up to them to decide whether they're going to continue to engage with reading. And the reality is that so many, for so many of them, they don't see themselves in books, and so they wonder the logic of engaging. And we know that there's a diverse literature now, very different from when some of us were growing up back in the day. So there are more opportunities, but we need to share with our educators what those opportunities are. We appreciate the presentation. I would like to acknowledge in, right behind you, our Director of Strategic Planning and Implementation, Ms. Kelly Siciliano Carter, her manager, Dr. Sean Henneka. We appreciate them being here today for the presentation. Thank you, presenters. We appreciate your presentation on this enormously important topic. Board, it is eleven. Board, it is 11:41. And what I would like to do with your forbearance is I would like to pivot back to the resolution that Dr. Judy Pritchett offered. It's a motion to support the passage of Senate Bill 861, sponsored by Senator Ed McBroom, and the passage of Senate Bill 942, sponsored by Senator Sean McCann, a Republican and a Democrat respectively. These bills introduced on February 8th and March 2nd respectively would provide streamlined reciprocity for out-of-school teachers and counselors by amending sections, MCL 380.1526, MCL 380.1531, MCL 380.1233. Additionally, this motion supports the development of a bill in the state legislature in collaboration with the Michigan Department of Education to provide flexibility and student safety associated with the professional requirements of substitute teachers. We thank Dr. Pritchett for her authorship of this motion. Dr. Pritchett, would you like to move it?
Yes, I will make a motion to, let's do the whole thing again, for the record, to support the passage of Senate Bill 861, sponsored by Senator Ed McBroom, and the passage of Senate Bill 942, sponsored by Senator Sean McCann. These bills introduced on February 8th and March 2nd would provide streamlined reciprocity for out-of-state teachers and counselors by amending sections of MCL 380, Sections 1526, 1531, and 1233. Additionally, support the development of a bill in the state legislature in collaboration with the Michigan Department of Ed to provide flexibility and student safety associated with the professional requirement of substitute teachers.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a motion by Dr. Pritchett, a second by Ms. Lipton. Do we have discussion to you, Dr. Pritchett?
Thank you. The reason I brought this motion forward is it is, we've continued, even this morning, we've continued to hear about the human capital issue going on in our schools and in particular having high-quality teachers and counselors available for our students and for our districts. And while there may be some districts in the state that are not feeling this as significantly, there are other districts in Michigan, in particular rural districts, districts that are further away from metropolitan areas that are feeling this at a higher rate, in particular, teachers of special education, teachers who bring skills maybe with dealing with students, I'll go back to our partnership district discussion, who may have more challenges coming into a classroom, that kind of expertise. And so we appreciate the senators stepping forward and saying, and working with Michigan Department of Education and saying, what can we do to try to assist with this? And having this reciprocity for a teacher or a counselor who have been, and I'm going to use the word licensed or certified, in another state. And I work best by examples. And I'm going to say, let's say that has happened in Wisconsin. They have had three years of successful either teaching or in their role as a counselor and have decided that they want to move to Michigan. In doing so, their certificate or license, however we want to refer to it, would be considered valid in Michigan through the passage of these bills as they then would be able to either, you know, apply for jobs or could be sought after by districts in Michigan as they continue to outreach to different areas to try to find qualified staff. I did have a couple of questions. Thank you to Nikki. She and I had a conversation. She asked a couple of questions that I didn't have the answers to. I did reach out to MDE staff. For example, let's say a district has a policy that they're going to provide a bonus for any new hire that they have, in particular, teacher or counselor. Would an individual coming from out of state qualify for that? That would be a district decision. If, you know, they have worked with their bargaining unit and have come up with that situation, it would be up to the district to determine whether, you know, this person's from out of state, we're going to provide them with the same kind of a bonus or something like that. Another question that came up is would the standards remain the same? And there is some language in both of those bills about certain trainings that have happened in Michigan for teachers, whether it's been in their student pre-teaching or teachers themselves that have had to be updated. And of course, those new individuals coming from another state, if they hadn't had that training over time, would have to have that training, just like our teachers have already. And I'll use the example, secondary teachers have to take a class in reading, in instruction of reading. So obviously, if an individual came, again, from my example, Wisconsin, they would be required at some point to have that updated. But other than that, they would not have to take the basic skills test or any other certification test in Michigan in order to keep that license or certificate valid and could start their teaching career here in Michigan. So that is my understanding of the bills, the way I've read them and the outreach of questions that I did have. But obviously, we have lots of staff here to answer other questions if we need to.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pritchett. That was unusually thorough.
Probably too much, yeah.
Thank you very much. Other reflections? So we have a motion, we have a second, we have the beginning of discussion. Dr. Pew, to you.
And it was unusually thorough in a good way. So thank you. So.
That was implied.
So, yeah. And thank you for writing this up. Mine is just really a procedural question. And that is, we typically, we're doing statements before we were doing a lot of resolutions. And will this be written up as a statement? Because I see it as a motion.
We will. We will. If the board were to approve this, we would notify the state legislature, every state legislator, of the passage of this motion and encourage the state legislature additionally because we certainly have been pushing on these efforts that these are important. And not only are they important, but they're urgent, that we began to work with Senator McBroom on the one effort in the fall with Senator McCann-ish the same time. You may recall last year, roughly at this time, I went to the Western UP. Senator McBroom represents the Western Upper Peninsula. In fact, I think he may represent you, Ms. Hanson, in Esconaba. And that trip had a number of outgrowths. One of them was coming back and raising concerns of superintendents from the Western UP about the need for greater opportunity around reciprocity. We have 1,000 teachers a year over the last five years that are initially certified outside of the state, subsequently certified in the state of Michigan, last year for which we have data, 1,326 certified outside of the state, subsequently inside the state. 31% in that last year for which we have data, initially certified outside, subsequently inside, which is terrific. But we think we can do a little bit more, and particularly at this time of shortage. I might add, this is really important in places like the Upper Peninsula, which do not have an enormous amount of teacher certification development. Northern Michigan University does an extraordinary job. Well, Finlandia has closed, Michigan Tech has paused, and Lake State has a smaller program. So I just, I share that with you because we view this as place-based and important because of that, number one. We also view this as non-place-based. We view this as something that can help out across the state. And I'm talking predominantly about the two reciprocity bills.
Correct.
The non-reciprocity bill, the substitute teacher bill, is something that will benefit everyone in the state equally. Yes. You have anything more on that?
Yeah, just, and that's all good. And that is why I would hope that this would be written up in some form, a statement where we can go and pull it.
It is, it is, it is, we can certainly share the letter that we write to the state legislature. We are actively, we worked with both Senator McBroom and Senator McCann on their bills and are working with Rep. Paquette on this third element.
And will I have access to it so that I can?
You will.
Share it? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Absolutely. Ms. Snyder, did you have your hand up? Okay, please.
I'd like to just sort of expand a little bit on student safety. But first, I want to gather a brief summary of what student safety in this resolution or statement of support indicates.
Sure. So we believe that there should be an age limit. We believe that young people should not be able to, as support staff members, be the teacher of record in a classroom, even as a substitute at the age of 18, unless you are in a teacher prep program. If you're in a teacher prep program, we could accept that of necessity. If you were not in a teacher prep program, we believe that that age should be higher. We would prefer it to be 21 years of age. That's one student safety issue. That's number one. The second student safety issue is we believe that every one of these substitutes should be permitted. And we believe that they should be required to have a permit because we believe that everyone should be part of the state system. We believe everyone should be part of the state system so that if an individual commits a crime and the state becomes aware of that crime, it can then share with that local school district that that crime has been committed and that individual charged of a given crime. As hard as it may seem, as hard as it may be to believe, there are individuals in local communities that commit crimes, the state knows about it before the local jurisdiction does. And it may be that the crime has nothing to do with their teaching. It may be that their crime would disqualify them from teaching. And they may not have disclosed, even though they're required to disclose. They may not have disclosed to their local school district. So we want every one of these substitute teachers to be permitted. Last year, when the legislature passed a bill in this area, it did not pass the permitting, and we thought that that was a student safety issue. We were concerned that someone was going to be placed in a classroom, recently hired as a support staff member, thrust into a substitute teacher position of necessity. State has no visibility over that individual because no permit. And there could be a crime committed, local school district not aware, state incapable of making that local school district aware. So that's the second element associated with school safety.
So I would just also add, you know, I'm reading, in reading the bill, there's information to it. It looks like changes added to it would be, you know, CPR is, certification is something that's required, correct? Is that new?
CPR is, it's already required.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, and that's part of the reciprocity bill, that if maybe it's not required in another state, you come here to teach and it is required.
Right. That's right. And by the way, it's required forward, not backward.
Correct.
Okay.
So the only thing, I mean, just reading through it that I would, you know, really encourage, and maybe this is just a matter of reaching out to Senator McBroom, is that, you know, the concept of seclusion and restraint should also be gathered because when teachers are coming from different states, there are definitely different laws regarding corporal punishment and different things. And I think our state has set a tone that we value understanding seclusion and restraint and the impact that has on students, so.
That's a good point. And in fact, every year, we put out information from the State Department to local school districts as a reminder of the state law. We think the state laws were an improvement, but we also think that we need to constantly work on professional development and reminders associated with state laws. So it's a good, it's a good point. Whether it were embedded in here or simply a reminder of a freestanding state law or state laws, one way or the other, we need to keep that effort going. That effort needs to continue to take place. And it's a local school district effort. Those local leaders have to train up their, not simply their new staff, critical, but also their veteran staff members that may have forgotten over a period of time. And I can see a head bob in the back. There's a lot to keep in mind, isn't there? Yeah.
We have a refresher video that we are sent to watch.
That's right.
At the beginning here.
Yes. Other thoughts or questions? Okay, very good. Mr. McMillan, to you.
Do we know whether the governor, the current governor, supports these bills?
We have shared these with the governor's staff. It is our understanding that the governor's staff is supportive of these. We've not heard specifically from the governor, but we would have heard specifically from her had there been an absence of support.
I didn't know if the ex-official member, or she is, no, the governor is, so her representative knows one way or the other?
Well, Ms. O'Day, we see you on the screen. Would you like to share regarding these two reciprocity bills and the subteacher bill?
The subteacher bill isn't a bill that has been written yet. So I know the governor signed the bill last year in support in light of the teacher shortage that we were having, the substitute teacher shortage that we were having. And we have had conversations with Dr. Kennedy regarding the reciprocity bills. So we will be watching those as they move through, watching for any substitutes and seeing whether or not that there's something that we can support as they move forward. But we recognize this as a means of addressing the educator shortage that we have in Michigan.
Okay. So that means the governor doesn't support it currently or is not willing to go on record supporting him currently? Is that right?
We don't typically go on record supporting bills until they pass the legislature.
Thank you. I have a lot of questions. I mean, I, as a legislator, I was kind of known as a no unless I was convinced yes on legislation. And so I was, I voted against my caucus way more than any other legislator did and probably ever has. So I have a lot of questions. I don't really want to prevent people from going to lunch.
Would you like to share a couple of them?
Well, do these sunset?
Do these sunset? So the, Dr. Kennedy, would you like to share the bill that is in draft form would sunset in two years?
Okay, I didn't see that. Is that?
Again, the bill, the bill that is in draft form that you do not have in front of you, you have 861 and 942 in front of you. There is a bill on substitute teaching. It is.
Not substitute, I'm talking about these two.
Right.
Do these two have sunsets?
So currently, no, they do not have sunset. We feel like that reciprocity piece is something that is of value, that makes it easier to be, you know, easier to bring teachers to the state. And right now, there's a lot of, there's just, there's a lot of things that don't align easily between other states in Michigan, and this just kind of helps onboard teachers. It doesn't, the expectation that they will get CPR training, I know we were talking about seclusion and restraint, those are things that are normally done through professional development at the local level. Those are things that will continue, but this was just something that we thought was a good idea in general, not, it certainly addresses the teacher recruitment efforts that we have, but it also was a good idea just to move in moving forward.
Is reciprocity for veteran?
Veteran teachers.
Certificated teachers from outside the state. They not only are certificated, but they have a track record in the profession. And this was an exhortation from many superintendent. From, from many superintendents.
I'm not as concerned about that one. I'm concerned about the counselor one. You know, this is talking about not just states, but countries. So somebody who's certified in Timbuktu, you know, if your subjective standards, or whoever is the, you know, if it's not sunsetted, the next 10 states' superintendents, whatever their subjective standard is in, in the section, or the, in the section that I'm looking at, and they're from Timbuktu, they could be coming in. And also, I'm kind of curious, is there, is there, do they have grounds for suing? Like, if they say, you're not allowing people that are in France, that are counselors in France, and maybe you've got some reasons, can they sue and say, you need, you know, your, your subjective standards are, are way too, you know, constraining and discriminatory? Would that, would that be allowed? I mean, and not just yours, but like I said, if there's no sunset for the next 100 years.
Yeah. I mean, I, I know, I know of no specific grounds that would be made more permissible by the passage of Senate Bill 942. That said, nothing precludes someone from suing.
And then, so as I read this, we're wiping out basically everything that says that, you know, like, a counselor, we're going to say that they don't have to have a counseling program that includes guidance services, individual and group analysis, guidance information, vocational development theory, counseling theory and practice, supervised experiences, evaluation, statistics, and research methodology. Where, the bill wipes all those out and just says, whatever the state superintendent decides, you know, with consultation with practicing school counselors, blah, blah, blah. Very, I mean, but instead of something very objective, it, it seems to me this goes to something very subjective. And I understand, I mean, there are a lot of issues, and counseling might be a good, is probably needed. I would argue that outside of government would be, counselors would be a better idea. If you want to give vouchers or whatever, that would be fine. But, you know, but, but wiping out all these, of these specific objective things that are in a education programs and saying, if I'm reading this right, and again, I don't have a staff to, normally I'd have a staff dig into these and really understand, but it just seems to me that it's really going to be based on whatever the state superintendent decides, right? And, and not just you, but future state superintendents.
Understood. No, I understand. It's a good question.
A lot of those strikes that you see in, in these bills was also an opportunity for us to update language, so that it better aligns with what, with our current practice. And I believe, I would want to make sure that specifically the lines that you're concerned about fall under that category. But I know there's a great deal of striking that would ponder those questions. It would make sense, you would have those questions, why are we deleting these? And it's, it's to align the, the language, taking the opportunity to use this legislation also to align language with, with current programs and what, how they're currently being.
Right. I understand, I wrote a ton of bills in my day, and you, you, you know, they update and take out superfluous or, but usually you would see the bold language kind of inserting, you know, what the replacement, I don't really see anything in here that says, we're deleting this because we're adding a few other sentences or words. So it seems to me that it just becomes, as I look at it, very subjective. What, that, we're wiping out everything that says, a school counselor, an education program that, and then everything's wiped out, that is approved by the superintendent of public education, based on standards developed by the department in consultation. So it just seems extremely subjective. I, I could be wrong, but I'm, again, I don't have a staff. And, and also the idea that it's not just reciprocity with states, but countries. I just, I find that somewhat alarming. And then also, what do current school counselors think of this legislation? Have, has there been?
They're very supportive. Yeah, the, the, these have been vetted with the professional organizations, and professional organizations are supportive.
And just, just a, a note, that the, the idea about outsourcing guidance counselors is somewhat challenged, given the fact that guidance counselors put together schedules at the secondary school level for children, middle school and high school. It would be a, a problem were you to outsource and not be able to put together children's schedules. Schools would very quickly grind to a halt in the absence of guidance counselors. We do, however, have a dearth of guidance counselors in the state, along with a dearth of social workers, school psychs, and school nurses. And we've worked with Section 310 funding, which was approved on a bipartisan basis by the state legislature, not this summer, but the preceding summer, to expand those helping professionals. And there are more than 600 additional helping professionals in those four fields together in the state in 20, there were more, 600 more in 2122 than in 2021, which is an enormous increase. And an acknowledgement on the part of the legislature that we simply haven't been funding these helping professionals in the way that we needed to. Did you have your hand up?
Wait, I'm not done.
I beg your pardon. Go ahead.
This doesn't talk about guidance counselors, this talks about school counselors. And, you know, I, I know with SEL, we're already creating a lot of armchair psychiatrists that I think could be, could be doing harm. Some might be doing good, some might be doing harm. To now say that, you know, we don't need all these very objective things that need to be in a program, but just whatever the state superintendent thinks. And again, with no sunset, it's not just you, it could be a future state superintendent that I, you know, that I disagree with 10 times more than I do you, or it could be a real conservative state superintendent that the majority on the board currently would disagree with. So, you know, I, I find that something like this without a sunset seems to be kind of unwise and troubling. And then again, just, just the whole, being, having countries, people that have a counseling degree in, in whatever, any, you know, any kind of country can now come in here and, and do counseling on things, on subjects that could be very, could have wide-ranging, you know, things that, you know, that results, and are very difficult when you're talking about psychiatry and psychology and counseling and therapy. And it's, it's an area that I think I would, before I would support a bill like this, I'd really want to dig into it a lot more.
Okay. Fair enough. Just, there's so much to unpack there. But just for the sake of clarity, guidance counselors and school counselors are used Ms. Snyder, and then Dr. Pew.
So, yes, lots to unpack there, but one thing that is certain that makes sense, I would think before our members would vote on this, is that we would understand and be able to read the language that, that is used in substitution for what's being crossed out, and, which is a big part of, I'd say, digging in the way that you're suggesting we dig in, Tom. I think it would be appropriate to move to table it until we have that language and may release a statement that we otherwise very much support reciprocity, because we understand that bringing teachers to the state of Michigan is something we really But it does seem quite short-sighted to just move out of urgency. So I, I would move to table it until we have that language, and I would consider doing that.
Motion to table, do we have a second?
Support.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none. If we could have a roll call vote on the motion to table.
Lipton?
No.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
No.
Pew?
No.
Snyder?
Yes.
Tilly?
No.
Albridge?
No.
Motion fails.
Motion to table has failed. We're back to the base resolution. Dr. Pew, to you.
I would like to call the question on the base resolution.
Calling a deflection. Any objection there, too?
Well.
Hearing none. Let's, roll call vote, please, Marilyn.
On the calling?
Base resolution.
On the calling the question, I think you have to have a vote.
Roll call vote, please.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Um, yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Snyder?
No.
Tilly?
Yes.
Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. We could have a vote, please, on the base resolution.
I would, I would make an amendment. I'd like to amend it to strike county, or country, or, wait, wait, no, I'm not striking, I'm not amending a bill. I guess, let's see, provide streamlined reciprocity for out-of-state. I guess my amendment would be, after out-of-state, comma, but, well, but not out-of-country, comma, teachers and counselors. I guess, I mean, I'm more concerned about counselors, but I guess I don't quite understand the concept of country.
So the amendment, sorry.
I'm just, I'm just trying to understand, you, you want to amend a draft bill that is subject to a resolution before the state board? It is the resolution that's before the state board?
I'm amending the resolution.
Okay.
Out-of-state, comma, but not out-of-country, comma, teachers and counselors.
So you would add the words, but not out of country?
I guess out of country or.
Is this premised on the notion that Timbuktu is a country?
Oh, dear.
It's just premised on the notion that I'm not sure, I mean, if I, do you want to discuss the motion without?
I, I, you have a motion, do we have a second to the motion?
You, well, are we still hashing out the wording of the resolution that's before the bill that isn't complete? I mean, are we still hashing that out? Is that what you'd like to do? Because I don't, I don't want to second it until, until you feel confident.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it, yeah.
I'm sorry, can you just read the sentence? Because I think, I don't think it says what you.
Would streamline?
These bills introduced on February 8th and March 2nd, respectively, would provide streamlined reciprocity with out-of-state teachers and counselors by amending sections. So you are essentially amending, you're, you're suggesting there's something now that's not going to be in the bill, that is, that is in the bill.
These bills have more than just talking about out-of-state teachers.
But you're suggesting by amending this, that somehow that's changing the bill? Because this is reference to the actual bills.
I just think that if we're going to say we would support, for example, I could have said, if there's a sunset, that would be more comfortable as well.
Didn't we call the question?
We did.
That means we vote, right?
And, and it is true. We, we called the question, and we called the question as is, not with amendment. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Snyder?
Pass.
Tilly?
Yes.
Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good. It's 1214, board.